Any other questions before we go ahead and open the public hearing?
Yes.
Just for the clarification on access for the tenants above. The lower part from the rendering appears to be mostly the showroom space. What are the logistics for getting the tenants into the building?
The tenants and the unit owners have priority. They have a designated parking spot already, some of them. Others, we have to make sure that those businesses that are in there, that their customers stay happy. So, the plan is being designed where the service is on one side and the exact configuration is not made up, but the preferred parking spot is on the second level. And that's going to be reconfigured because a lot of people like to be undercover. And also, the people visiting the building will be also on the first floor. The dealership by no means is taking over the whole complete first floor. It's going to be shared space.
I guess in short, does that mean that the main lobby, the receiving area for the offices above, will then meet on the second floor? They'll be entering in from the second floor?
No.
Or will they still be on the first floor?
Still on the first floor. They're going to walk through a showroom. It's going to be a very beautiful... They're going to walk through an entrance and they're just going to walk right into the elevator bank that's there. Maybe with a glass structure. It's a very... It's an inviting. We want the people going into the building to walk through this gorgeous lobby. That is what happening. I wish we could put a little cafe/restaurant on the bottom floor so people could sit there. And again, we're not reinventing the wheel. This is done all over the world where people sit next to a showroom that's wide open and there's cafes, there's walk-through. Go look at new modern showrooms on Google and you'll see very impressive of what they're doing.
Okay, Mr. Burns, thank you. At this point, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. A public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to address this matter, please come forward. State your name and address. Good evening, Maureen.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
It's a real privilege to be here before this eminent body. Welcome to the city. I'm Maureen Brody-Harwitz. I reside at 2390 Bayview Lane. I have been there since 1965. Formerly was a member of the Planning Commission, the Charter Review Board, the Parks and Recreation Boards. I've been in the city a long time. I reviewed this packet and the staff recommendation, and what's missing from it is very significant. And Kevin is very gifted. He's a salesman. He's wonderful. And he's selling you tonight because many of the things he's talking about should have been presented to the staff for their review, but unfortunately, it was not. It looks like this application was really done in an expedited way because a letter of intent from the applicant is dated April 16th with a supplement on April 21st. And then it got noticed and here we are on May 5th. This is a very significant project and the requested change is a district-wide change for the entire C-2BW from Whole Foods all the way up to 135th Street to allow auto repairs ancillary to an auto dealership. This is not what the C-2B zone was designed for. And Kevin is right. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for a plan for the city. And this plan guides the development of the city. And the purpose of C-2B East and West, E and W, is to enhance the high-quality commercial areas in the city. Now, C-1 commercial is to provide the citizens of the city with convenient access to goods and services without adversely impacting the integrity of residential neighborhoods. This is not C-1. But the use that they're recommending that you allow is a C-1 use. And why is that important? First of all, when you think of our C-2B district, you have to think of it almost as if you're laying out a mall, an enclosed mall with anchors. Right now, we have a new anchor. We have the Whole Foods store. And it won't be much time before the effect of having Whole Foods in the city spills all along that corridor with the type of development that the Whole Foods clientele like. Vegetarian restaurants, health food stores, yoga studios, clothing for exercise, that kind of mixed services. You saw that happen with Moca. When Moca came in about 20 years ago, downtown North Miami was a disaster. There were many, many empty storefronts and many uses that didn't encourage people to come to our downtown. About four or five or six years after Moca came, one after another, we got mid-century modern antique stores, magazines related to art and architecture. And now there are eight or nine stores that are substantial stores in downtown North Miami because of the Moca, including one that takes up eight or nine stores that international people come to buy their antiques from, mid-century modern antiques. So, to put a stop to the kind of effect that Whole Foods will encourage along that corridor, the kind of uses that the residential areas of Keystone, San Soucy, and the high-rises around it will benefit from as individuals living in the area and allow the proliferation of the kind of uses automotive sales, retail, repairs will counter-effect the hundreds of thousands of dollars of our master plan. Now Lexus up the road is west of the railroad packs. It is not on Biscayne Boulevard. It is in an M1 industrial district, and it is appropriate there. So, you can't even compare Lexus to this. It has nothing to do with it, and the area it's in has nothing to do with this prime commercial real estate within North Miami. I want to talk a little bit about the staff's report. The first sentence says that the applicant is under contract to acquire the building, formerly known as the Wells Fargo Bank. And then it says, "to purchase the ground floor and portion of the enclosed garage to establish a new flagship Volvo North Miami." But if you look in your packet and you look at the trip generation by a good, solid traffic consultant, they estimate the trips based on 7,000 square feet. Well, that's the size of a bayfront home in Keystone Point. That has nothing to do with what we heard described here tonight. So, the trip generation data is essentially meaningless. So, we don't know what the traffic impacts can be. What is also not in here is a description of the building. Now, we did hear from the presentation about the building. Yes, it is a nine-story building that was built in 1972. It has about 14,000 square feet per floor. It has a parking garage that's about 50,000 square feet. And it is a non-conforming building. It is non-conforming because it exceeds the height in the district. And it's non-conforming because it doesn't meet the parking requirements of the district. The parking requirements of the district, of our LDRs and our plans, say that for every 300 square feet of gross retail, you need one parking space. That means for each floor of that building, we need about 46, 47 parking spaces, probably around 420 parking spaces. And you heard Mr. Burns say there's 300. Well, the plans, the old plans show 266. But no matter what, there is at least 100 car deficit for parking at that building. There are 38 condo owners in that building. There may be some who own parking spaces, but the public records show that most do not own parking spaces. They merely have an easement in their favor to use the parking garage. The Volvo proposal is to take away the whole first floor of the garage. Now, if there are 300 spaces in that garage, that's taking away 100 spaces. That leaves 200 for the rest of the building. Our LDRs, our plans state that when you have a non-conformity, you cannot allow, you cannot allow a modification, an alteration, a reconstruction of that building that will further worsen the non-conformity. In the staff report, there is no information about the parking needs requirements for the Volvo facility. None, not a word. And in the restrictions in the back, it talks about, "All vehicle storage in the bulk required parking shall be located in the rear of the building, save for any required parking, which should be located as close to the front entrance as permitted by the site restrictions." Well, if you go there, there's no available parking. There's nowhere for any customer to park in the front. None. It's almost like a lot-line-to-lot-line building. It also says the loading and the unloading. Well, it's restricted and they tell you why. How it's restricted? It'll be on 126th Street. But our LDRs require that be dedicated parking spaces, dedicated parking spaces for loading and unloading. And that's not in here. So, there is not enough information submitted to our staff for them to do the kind of thorough review that this Planning Commission needs to make a really considered decision. And I would request that you deny this recommended change. I would just like to say, I went online to look up Volvo North Miami because they say they're relocating from Miami Gardens. And there's a very nice video of their service center. They have six bays for servicing the cars, the tires, and oil change, and all the kinds of things that they do. Well, that takes away from the parking at that level, six bays. It also states that they have 91 new cars for sale, 90, and 70 used cars for sale, 11 certified and 59 pre-owned. So, that's 161 cars that have to be stored somewhere. Yet this application's traffic generation is based on a 7,000-square-foot facility. There are so many inconsistencies in the application. And this is such a momentous request that I urgently ask you to reject this application. The other thing that's very interesting about Volvo North Miami, if you were to go online and look up Key Biscayne Volvo, they'll say, "We recommend that our customers on Key Biscayne go to Volvo North Miami. It's very easy to get to. You just go up the highway and off 441." This is not going to be your neighborhood auto dealer. This is regional. This is a big draw for this area in terms of traffic and use. And we do have good things happening in the city, positive things happening in the city, and we don't have to degrade our prime commercial corridor in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you. Good evening, sir. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Bob Pishon. I live at 13005 Coronado Terrace in Keystone Point. I'm here tonight... Kevin is a salesman. I bought Christmas trees from Kevin. I voted for Kevin. I disagree with Kevin. I'm here tonight because, on behalf of the Keystone Point Homeowners Association, who today unanimously drafted a resolution that they'd like me to read into the record, it resolved that the Keystone Point Homeowners Association hereby takes the official position as being against the proposed ordinance amending the city's development regulations to allow retail showroom automobile as a special exception use in the C-2BW district. Furthermore, the Keystone Point Homeowners Association will oppose any future changes affecting the Biscayne corridor not submitted as part of the review process for the North Miami Comprehensive Plan. We oppose piecemeal changes that slice away at the overarching vision for the city on an ad hoc basis. Rezoning an entire district, and this is rezoning, in response to a single application is irresponsible. And there is inadequate information available regarding the viability of the application at all. We're a residential neighborhood with many young families that will support retail that enhances our quality of life and don't believe that a string of car dealerships and service bays up and down Biscayne Boulevard do that for our neighborhood. There are other parts of the city that are zoned to allow these businesses. Let them go there. Someone on this panel last week said, "If you build it, they will come." We'll build it elsewhere. Our neighborhood is a fragile ecosystem for traffic. There's one entrance to the east and two entrances to the west. Traffic congestion are already bad. And when anything happens, and anything could be a rainy day, traffic goes from bad to worse. Where will people drive, where will people test-drive the cars? Biscayne Boulevard? That's not likely. It took me 15 minutes to get from Costco to Walgreens. They're more likely to go look for a quiet street with not a lot of traffic. That sounds like mine. I'm sure there'll be promises made. I'm sure there'll be promises made that that won't happen, but I don't know who monitors that. Our Homeowners Association strongly opposes this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jay Weinstein, 2273 Bayview Lane in Keystone. I'm listening to all this, and I keep hearing one of the issues is traffic. And I think part of why that's an issue is because the city has already lost a couple of streets to Johnson and Wales. And so, it's funneled traffic into that one street. And I recall when Johnson and Wales made a pitch here, and they were asked, "Well, what are you going to do about that empty lot across the street?" Or that empty lot that you own? People are parking there. And they said, "Oh, no. We're not going to let anyone park there. When we take over and build this campus, no one's going to park in that empty lot." Well, I come into Keystone Point every day. And what slows down the traffic very often are people who are parking at that empty lot, the one we were told they would not be allowed to do. And I don't know about you, but I was always taught that the shortest distance from one point to another is a straight line from A to B. And I can imagine people... And by the way, I love Volvo. I've owned six of them, although I don't think they make cars like they used to. But the shortest distance to get into that building is to park at that empty lot. And I don't hear anyone from Johnson and Wales here tonight talking about what they're going to do with that empty lot. And I don't hear anything in their plan talking about how they're going to ensure that all the customers and all the residents of that building and everyone visiting that building are going to continue to use what clearly now is presented by Maureen, an inadequate amount of parking to begin with. No one's addressing that empty lot across the street, which I believe is going to continue and get worse under this idea. I would urge you not to support it at this point. There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed. And I think you need to take the time to take a look, a hard look, at what's being proposed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak before us? Good evening, Mr. Seifried.
Good evening, Mr. Ernst. Thank you. My name is Kevin Seifried. I live at 12665 Northwest 8th Avenue. We're west of 95 on the other side of town. And I'm actually going to speak in favor of this. Now, this is a positive aesthetically pleasing repurposing of an old building. I've had a wonderful opportunity in my life to travel somewhat and visit major cities in some major urban areas, both in this country and in Europe. And this concept of reducing the size of automotive dealerships and moving into smaller showrooms and having parking in concealed garages is the future of this kind of industry. The landscape and refacing of the parking garage is something that the Planning Commission has sought for years and years and years. And we've been unsuccessful in convincing owners that this is what needs to be done. This plan is good. The aesthetics work. The traffic study is fair and accurate. This will reduce traffic on Biscayne Boulevard, certainly much better than the bank building that was there. The future impact of grocery chains and food retailing, we're going to see that continue to develop through other retail operations. We know that eventually, publics will get around to reworking the shopping plaza by Johnson and Wales. And when we look at the huge amount of progress that we've had from the Johnson and Wales overlay district, it's been successful in the big picture. This is going to be an asset to the city. And yes, it's going to be an asset to the side of the town as well. Wish we could get this kind of thing on the west side, but unfortunately, we can't. However, this is a very good, well-thought-out presentation, and I would urge the Planning Commission to unanimously support it. Thank you.
All right, everyone, please. Let's maintain order.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Howard Tonkin, 12600 Griffin Boulevard. I'd like to speak on behalf of supporting this project because, first and foremost, it's terrible to tear down buildings and put all these buildings into landfills and just build from scratch all over again. And taking a building like this and doing something cool and repurposing the building is a very environmentally responsible thing to do. Plus, Volvo is a great company that makes a high-quality vehicle, and they have a great record with their cars. This is a new type of showroom that they would be doing, which is great to be going vertical rather than taking up these huge expanses of blacktop, which is another thing that's bad for the environment. And I think Biscayne Boulevard would actually be served by having this type of building because this is taking things in a higher-end direction than, say, Burger King or Wendy's, which we have, the Wendy's. And this is a good company doing something that reminds me of something like Park Avenue in Manhattan or something that they do in Sydney, Australia, where they have a little cafe and a car dealership in a building that's going to be refurbished in a nice way rather than the typical lutz that we see. So, I think for the idea of Nomi and North Miami, as we move forward about being a more cool city, I think this is really a good type of development on Biscayne Boulevard in the right location. And this is like the antithesis of what we saw with the debacle with Walmart. This is a perfectly good urban development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Ms. Prager.
Good evening, Mr. Ernst. How are you?
Fine.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Carol Prager. I reside at 2509 Northeast 135th Street. I live off of Biscayne Boulevard. A special exemption use to foster economic growth. What a novel idea in North Miami. I can't think of a better way to restart North Miami's long stagnant progress than with a recognized, reputable, world-class brand. This flagship concept is similar, is familiar to me. I travel a great deal to Los Angeles. My family is there. I know of two showroom concepts like this. One is on Ventura Boulevard, which is a world-famous street. The other one is on Sunset Boulevard, which makes Ventura Boulevard look like small potatoes. On Ventura Boulevard, there is a Cadillac dealership with a huge showroom that has each of its models in the showroom. And in behind this building, which is only two stories high, may I add, they have their service bay. It is landscaped beautifully. Surrounding the Cadillac dealership, because I frequent that area, is a Gelson's supermarket. Now, Gelson's is a fresh market with maybe a couple more stars. Within walking distance of the Cadillac dealership is a Whole Foods. I know this because I walk to both of these places. There are cafes. There are boutiques. There are mom-and-pop businesses along Ventura Boulevard. And if I tell you they have parking situations in Ventura, they would trade places with us any day of the week to have our kind of parking situation. The one on Sunset Boulevard is in West Hollywood. It is surrounded by five-star hotels, restaurants, and clubs. It is a world destination. And nobody chased the Mercedes-Benz dealership off of Sunset Boulevard. It's very difficult sometimes to say yes. Yes to growth is always a challenge in North Miami. Yes, of course, will present change, and change is difficult. And change requires compromise. And as far as I can see, the applicant here is very open to compromise. As far as what could be coming to North Miami, we can speculate about that all day long. We've been talking about Biscayne Landing for 15 years. And Biscayne Landing was going to be the biggest thing and the best thing that ever happened to the city. Well, we don't have much to show for that. So, we have a bird in hand, which in my estimation is better than two in the bush. I'm asking the Commission... I'm telling the Commission that I believe it's time to stop chasing good business out of and away from North Miami. I'm asking the Commission to consider all the possibilities available within the existing comp plan that will survive whatever lawsuit may come your way. Instead of the quick and customary no, I'm asking you to please explore the yes. Thank you.
Rollings 1244 North Bayshore Drive. Just a little word of advice to Kevin and the Volvo people. I think you could get the Keystone Point Homeowners Association to make a complete about-face if these guys could put their heads together and figure out some way to stop the cut-through traffic in Keystone Point. We're looking at Ocean Cadillac putting up a seven-story building on the other end. So, we got Volvo on one end, Cadillac on the other. If we can stop the cut-through traffic, I think both of them would fly.
Sir, did you speak prior to this, or was the other issue?
Yeah, that was on the other end.
All right. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Robert Fleming, 2205 Arch Creek Drive, Keystone Point. I think it's a great idea, but it's a wrong location. Again, we just spoke about Biscayne Landing. I thought that's where we were going to put the car dealerships, in Biscayne Landing. Whatever happened to that? I mean, that's way down far away from Keystone Point. These guys talked about how they're going to test-drive the cars on Biscayne Boulevard. And just a few breaths later, they just told us the gridlock on Biscayne Boulevard. You're going to go, what, a mile an hour just down the street in a test-drive? Not likely. You go straight across the street here. You got all these open roads where my kid plays on. Don't like the idea. Talking about transparency. If you want to be transparent, nothing against Kevin, but I'd like to know how much they paid him to pitch this idea. And he lives in Keystone Point. I guarantee, if he didn't get paid, he wouldn't be pitching the idea. Pay me, I'll pitch the idea also. But I wouldn't believe in it, nor I don't think it's the right idea for our community. Again, Biscayne Landing, I think that's a great place to put it, across from residential area, which if you're going to come out, go straight across, you're going to go there. Or do you want them to drive around where all the children, the kids are over there in Johnson and Wales? You know them cross across the street. That was one of the... That was one of the reasons putting a roundabout, so people don't shoot down that street. Bad idea. Please deny it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Please hold your applause.
William Welsh, San Soucy Homeowners Association. The association is based...
Can you give me your address, sir, please?
San Soucy Homeowners Association. I'm speaking for the homeowners.
Yes, we need your legal name and address, sir.
William Welsh.
And you don't...
I don't...
For the record, we need your...
I don't believe I need to give my personal address. I'm speaking for the association, sir.
Counselor.
You're requested to give the... Can you please provide your address?
I prefer not to.
Okay.
I prefer not to.
If he doesn't want to, then he may proceed.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. We're basically opposed because, you know, no offense to them, but we don't, the traffic is a nightmare as it is. We don't know what the new traffic will be. Secondly, rezoning the whole area so that they can pop up. We're looking at, I believe, a Fiat dealer at the old Bank of America site that's on San Soucy Boulevard and Biscayne Boulevard with a maintenance facility there, which is going to create traffic snarl on San Soucy and Biscayne. Now, we're having that one. We're having traffic. It's going to be like 441 in a little while. What is the point? Why are we rezoning that whole area so automobile dealerships can come in? I've traveled the world. I've lived in Australia, England, all, my sister lives in Hong Kong. I see these dealerships all over. Some are beautiful, some are gorgeous. Others, after a few years, are trash. And I don't, you know, Volvo, I would suspect, will be a nice dealership. But what happens if it doesn't sail? If it doesn't work, even though they own the building? What is they going to, what are they going to put in there later? Where is their major maintenance facility going to be at? These are just a few questions that are not answered. Why are we rezoning the whole area just for one building? Why can't we give them an exemption for one building instead of rezoning the whole area? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Hi, Elana Burdick, 13502 Northeast 24th Place. For the past 20 years, my family has made a large investment in North Miami with apartment buildings and rentals. It is very frustrating to me over these years to see us stagnate. And I know a lot of the faces and people in Keystone. I don't disrespect them. But I do know that we are afraid of a lot of things. For years, I have been talking about our city being built short, way short of parking. And if we stretch our borders or stretch our streets or do away with all the green spaces, we will never, ever get them back. We have to find better ways to allow us to grow and to allow people to come and have businesses. Now, I never spoke to Kevin Burns about this. This is my first introduction to this whole thing. I'm new to this, but yet what I hear, and I know he's a salesman, he's got a great smile, but what I'm hearing, my common sense, some of us have common sense and some of us don't. I was born with a gift of common sense. It tells me that these minor things that could be worked out should be worked out. We need to allow businesses to come in here. $30 million revenue is nothing to sneeze at. And again, we cannot put all eggs in one basket and rely on Biscayne Landing. We need to spread out. We are currently allowing the other municipalities around us to grow and smother us with all this silly traffic. I can't get in and out of my street because of the traffic. I make my little shortcuts through the Starbucks Plaza if I can. Not legal, but I do it carefully. It's here to stay, and I'm a New York transplant, Manhattan. You know what the traffic is like there? There, you put on your walking shoes and you walk in your suit down to work with your briefcase. You find a way to do it. Bicycles, whatever. We need to be able to move forward. Put in the little tweaks and whatever you need to do, but this is a good thing. Don't let it go somewhere else. We need the revenue, we need the stability, we need the jewel in the crown, we need a showcase like this. This is lifting the bar. I know people disagreed with Tauber's buildings, but to me, architecturally, he raised the bar. We don't have boxes anymore. We have architecturally designed strip malls that are pleasing with gas lights and fountains, and we need this. This is uplifting not only for us financially, but for the human spirit. When you come home or you go there, you see it. Everybody should be able to enjoy something that is uplifting. Thank you for your time. Please vote yes.
Thank you.
Louise Poe, 12913 Exora Circle, Keystone. One of the ways that I sneak around is that street because I can't turn left hardly anymore when I come out of Keystone Boulevard because there's traffic even blocking the intersection. I have to scoot around like this, go around this car and go around that car. And I go to see my children in Biscayne Park by going there and going on the roundabout and going to 16th Avenue. Lately, I can barely get across that intersection. And sometimes coming home, I go the same way. I come in that same way. And there's already vans and cars parked in the street on that edge. I don't know where they're going, if they're delivering something or they're doing something, but because they can't get parking, they park in the street. Where are the cars going to be delivered? The truck, the car carrying, whatever you call them, tractors are going to park there on that street? They can't get in the parking lot. Where are they going to deliver the cars? They're going to park in that street and block it? You cannot test-drive on Biscayne Boulevard. I can't even get across it. I'm worried about the traffic. I love the building. I think it looks beautiful. I just wish they could put it like somewhere else, a little further that way or a little... Well, they can't go south because it's too crowded there. And if San Soucy is going to end up with one, they're going to have more trouble. North, there's not a lot of places either because, well, I thought Biscayne Landings was going to have a couple. We're going to look like 441, which I'm not crazy about either. I thought we were beautifying North Miami, not making it into a huge car dealership area. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Michelle Marquez. I live in Keystone Point, 1970 South Hibiscus. I listened to all the conversations, and I just had a few comments. I guess first for me is I do too also drive out of Keystone Boulevard and 126th Street. I'm concerned with traffic. Johnson of Wales has closed off a portion of that street, so you have to advance all the way to 16th. And I do believe the car transport trucks will offload on that street. If you take a look at the Lamborghini dealership, et cetera, north of Costco, those transport trucks load off on Biscayne Boulevard. So I don't think they're going to load off on Biscayne Boulevard at our location, but I'm sure that they will load off on 126th Street. The other concern is I believe we're getting a new Publix, which is one block over on 127th or whatever that next road is on the other side of the bank. And I believe that new Publix is being turned around, and all of the vehicles that are to deliver products to that new Publix would be accessing from Biscayne Boulevard west onto that 127th or whatever that street is called. So again, now we have two streets leaving Biscayne Boulevard heading west. They're going to have large transport vehicles unloading stuff. The other concern for me is Kevin made a point of saying that this location was already zoned to allow for a car showroom. I go on Lincoln Road Mall, and I go into the Tesla car showroom on Lincoln Road Mall, and it's very nice, and they have a couple of cars, and you can talk to the salespeople and look, you know, look at it. But what Kevin's group, I think, is asking for is a change in the code to allow for minor repairs. And to me, that's a concern. If they want to glass-in the bottom of a building and create a showroom and put a couple of nice cars in it and have it look classed up and allow people to walk up and take a look and sit down and make a purchase, great. But if you're going to have a majority of vehicles entering your neighborhood for oil changes and tire rotations and all the things that they do at Tire Plus and Tire Kingdom and rapid oil change and all of these other locations, I don't think that's a good location for it. And as they said, you are considering changing the code for that entire corridor, not just that one location. So I think you guys are forgetting the part that, yes, they could have a very nice, small boutique showroom, but allowing the minor repairs, I think, is something that's very important. The other thing that I think is interesting about our city is that we have a very choppy border. There are not a lot of clearly defined North Miami areas. Unincorporated Dade County comes jamming up right through the middle of us from the south, and North Miami Beach comes jamming right down the middle of us from the north. And so it's very difficult to maintain a consistent look when you have so many different planning commissions deciding what they are not going to allow. Like a number of the other people said, there are going to be car dealerships being built in unincorporated Dade County, just blocks away. So even though we as a city might only be allowing this one car dealership with minor repairs in our city, five or six blocks down, you're going to have a giant Fiat dealership. And then you head north, and who knows what the city of North Miami Beach is going to allow? But because their municipalities, like, cut right through the center of our city, it makes it very difficult to control and to envision this, you know, master plan of comfort and community. So I think we need to be really careful about what we allow in our fringes and next to these other municipalities. When we used to have the food trucks that would come to the open lot where Johnson of Wales still has not built, so we have no idea what they're going to put there, a lot of the community would walk out of Keystone and go to these truck, you know, functions. I still walk and go to the pizza place on the corner. I walk, I feel comfortable walking through the campus and going to Flit Burger and going to Ricky's Thai and going to all these other restaurants, and it's very comfortable. I think if you allow a scenario where there's a car dealership that's open till nine that does repairs and has a loudspeaker going, say, "Pick up on 27" or "Get that car here for, you know, a tire change," and you're hearing the zip, 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 zip of the tire machines and everything, I just think it's not going to be as comfortable. So I think we really need to, you know, take a look at it. If the facility right now is zoned for a nice little fancy showroom, then put in a showroom, put a couple cars in there, and great. But the whole change to the repair, the minor repair, the oil changes and et cetera, I think is not a good idea for this neighborhood. And as the other young lady put with regards to North Miami, we don't have bike lanes in the city. People can't bike around comfortably. We don't have people movers. We don't have Metro Rails. We don't have subways like they do in New York City and all of these places. So we have to use a car if we want to safely move about the city. If you want to start widening sidewalks and putting in bike lanes that don't have motorized vehicles in them, if you want to give us some mass transit in this city, that would be great. And then if you want to start popping densely, you know, packaged sales and restaurants, and that would be great. But right now, we can't even walk the sidewalk. We have no covered park benches or bus-stop benches because we don't have enough room on our sidewalks. So I just feel like we really need to be careful not allow people to overbuild the locations that they're looking to go into. And again, this is for an entire zone that they're requesting this change, not just this one store. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other? All right, folks, let's try to move along here because we want to... So if anybody else, go ahead and step up and wait in line so we get an idea.
May it please the Commission.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Douglas Seinmarsh. My address is protected by statute. For transparency, I'm a former member of the Code Enforcement Board until they did away with it, the Civil Service Board. I'm presently the Chair of the Personnel Board. The Board of Adjustment, I was on. I've been a former magistrate and a hearing officer. I am here both as the President of Keystone Point Homeowners Association, which unanimously opposed this, and I'm here as an individual. Now, I cannot get away from being an attorney at law, and attorneys at law do this. They balance things. And I've listened to everybody, and I have the utmost respect. And the best thing about tonight is I got to see my old friend Fernando and Kevin Burns. Kevin Burns is not a salesman. He's a paid lobbyist. So you have to put things in perspective. When Fernando's presentation gave a traffic analysis, remember, that's his expert. If he really wanted to do an independent medical examination, as we do in the law, let them pay for a traffic analysis retained by the city independently or Keystone Point that opposes this independently. Let them control who the traffic study is made by but paid for by them. I don't think they want to do that. See, there was an author in the American literature named Mark Twain, and he said there's liars, there's damn liars, and there's statisticians. I can prove to you statistically that it's okay to pump 900 gallons of water into a white mouse and it won't kill him, but we all know that's nonsense. So we get into the area of mendacity. This is all about money. Now, let's do some due diligence, and I did. I depend on people for support. The building in question required 466 parking spaces when built. It got a variance, only 265. Kevin says 302. Perhaps we have different $4 plastic calculators. But Volvo wants 90 spaces for their service. There's not enough parking now, but take 90 away from them. What do you have? You have Mr. Dentist, oh, excuse me, Dr. Dentist, Dr. Doctor, Mr. Architect, and Mr. CPA that bought condos in there, office condominiums that do not have dedicated parking, and every day they have to fight for them. And when Plugless, the lawyer, wants to have his clients, and it's a family matter, and there's six clients coming in with five cars, what are we going to do? We're going across the street to Johnson of Wales, no parking, and Code Enforcement Officer Fitz can't write tickets fast enough. Now, the 13 restrictions that Nixon LeBron, it's nice to meet you finally, Nixon, read, I can't hear because I was around big guns and I have bad ears. The point being, I think those restrictions need to be tweaked, they need to be published, and they need to be talked about. So we do not in Keystone want a car lot at our entrance. This is not a tax change. This is not only just some restrictions. This is say one thing, do another. I call it bait and switch. I used to do Consumer Law. This is not misinformation. This is not resistance to change. 441, I heard him mention the used car lot. That is a beautiful place for a new car lot. If I'm going to spend $50,000 for a Volvo XYZ, I don't mind driving to 441. And then I can test-drive it. And guess what? I can go zinging right up to the cloverleaf, and I can get on I-95, and I can see what that Volvo can do. How are you going to do that on Biscayne Boulevard? Commissioner H, I know how you're going to vote. I've watched your facial expressions, and I, you know, I do jury work. I want you to come downtown, try one of those cases with me, and then at 3:30, we judge gets us leave early. And from Flagler Street to 96th Street, it ain't going to be too bad. Stop and go, stop and go, stop. We get to 96th Street because Miami Shores cut the side roads off. Miami Shores Country Club, you're in a Venturi. And from 96th Street to Keystone Point, it's going to take hours. And when we get Biscayne Landing in, we're going to do something probably in between here and Biscayne Landing. I got another place up at the Reef Club on 163rd Street, and at the wrong... And when we get Biscayne Landing in, we're gonna do something probably in between here and Biscayne Landing. I got another place up at the Reef Club on 163rd Street, and at the wrong time of the day, I'd rather ride my bike or it takes 90 minutes to walk than try to drive a car. So, you know, a traffic study is a traffic study is a traffic study, but when you put too much sewage in the sewer pipe, it explodes. And that's what's gonna happen with Biscayne Boulevard. So my point being, you are about, if you pass this, if this occurs, you will defenestrate Keystone Point. That is the backbone with San Sushi of the tax base that you have built North Miami upon. Do your analysis. Keystone, San Sushi, I've heard 72%. I've heard 80%. I've heard as high as 85. I don't think it's that. That's your tax base. You should protect that. Because that's where you're getting your money to do whatever you do with the city with. And if you do this to Keystone, that's pantaglueing in nature. I'm looking at Fiat. I actually spoke for James when he came here for Fiat. They weren't supposed to have any cars on the grass. They don't have grass. They carved the grass up, they put some rocks in there. It, it's not on the square. Is it legal? I suppose it is, or Code Enforcement would be doing something with it. But the point is bureaucracy and businesses grow. Now, I would encourage my Homeowner Association, if you pass this, to go to court. And what I always do, I look at my closing argument first. Before I try my case, I build a closing argument. I was trained by a couple of characters named Dan Paul and Julius Friedman. They said, always go to the end first. And you've got a lawyer right here, and he's a good lawyer. I've watched him. He's great. Harwood's pointed out, further worsen. That's your winning appellate argument. If you pass this, it's probably gonna head, and it might be lost all the way up to the Third District. I think the Third District is smart enough to know what further worsen means. And if you can't do it, then this planning commission should look at that, get a legal opinion from Roland Galdos, and go with that opinion. Because if you can't do it, why, why waste the judicial time? And I would encourage you to vote no on this recommendation, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, ma'am. Yes. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Alida Rosenfeld, Biscayne Bay Drive in Keystone Point. I'm also going to go with the folks that spoke before about asking you to reject and deny this application, and I'll tell you why. I don't have the knowledge that the lawyers have that have spoken. They're brilliant. But I have just a little bit of common sense. Living in Keystone Point, I know that our streets are public streets. I have a Volvo, so I have nothing against them. I just took a test drive, as a matter of fact, a few days ago for a new Volvo through a private neighborhood that had streets just like we have. The streets that have the little, the gates that don't prohibit anyone. And why did the drivers take me there? Because it was a quieter street. I could drive their nice Volvo on. Nice, clean streets, very few pedestrians. We certainly didn't wanna go on a major street on 441, so they took me through a nice neighborhood. What nice neighborhoods are there around this proposed dealership? San Sushi and Keystone Point. Just makes common sense that that's where they would take you. They cannot take you driving through Johnson's &amp; Wales, through 16th Avenue. Biscayne Boulevard has way too much traffic and the stoplights, making it a very unviable place to really drive. So the driving alone, the vehicular traffic, is not conducive for this proposal. As you heard, Johnson's &amp; Wales will have, at some point, building rights to that lot. Hopefully, they'll continue and make this a cultural jewel for that area. But that'll also bring more traffic to Biscayne. Publix shortly will be unloading trucks at their new proposed store. I'm sure you all have seen the renderings of it. The Publix company showed us the renderings of the facing of the Publix last year, so I'm quite sure they're getting close to that. So the trucks are going to be backing up again to that street. Now, as far as the spaces in the building, y'all could be right. I heard there were about 253 spaces. They're going to take 58% of the building. Approximately 146, maybe 150 spaces will be allotted to Volvo. 150 spaces. So they want 90 for the customer service, for the service, for the oil changes, for the various amenities. That's 90 out of, say, 150 spaces. Then they need to store new vehicles to show people. Then they need to have spaces for the workers. Let's not forget, people have to sell and service those vehicles that work there. And then what do you have left? Maybe 15, 20 spaces for people that might be interested in looking in the showroom? Now, where's that overflow gonna go? They gonna go to the empty parking lot? It's much more convenient. They gonna go on the side of the street? Much more convenient. I think that there are a lot of things that, a lot of information that's inadequate at this point. As, as someone, several people mentioned, unloading the vehicles? Where are they gonna unload it? Do you have enough information to realistically take a vote tonight on this without knowing where they're going to unload it? Where they're gonna have large trucks? And at what time of the day? The repairs, the oil changes and so forth? Has all this been run by EPA? Because there are, what, five different oil change places up and down Biscayne Boulevard? From Costco, the auto repair places and so forth? As well as the gas stations? Is that a necessary thing in this particular neighborhood that we wanna do that type of service? I don't think so, although, as you probably know, most auto dealers make 90% or so of their profits from service and repairs. I see why they want it. I don't see why we would, in the city, want another oil change location. As someone did suggest, and I think it's not a bad idea, if Kevin is right, and they're zoned for an auto location where they can have a showroom, just like the Tesla on Lincoln Road or in, I think I saw one in Boca, a nice showroom where it's all enclosed in glass, let them have the showroom. That's a very attractive way to make use of the bottom of the building. But not to have dealerships that are gonna have woefully inadequate parking, that are unnecessary as far as doing service and repairs on that particular street. Guys, I don't think you really do have enough information to make an informed vote tonight. If you did, I think you would look at this in a different light. I'm all for change. I'm all for upscale change. However, with the school being right there and building, hopefully, even more lovely buildings and attracting a wonderful clientele to our city, with the Publix on the other side and with Whole Foods on the other side, I'd like to see an affluent type of a business there. Wouldn't mind a showroom, but I don't think we can afford to have another oil change showroom repair place plus a place that's gonna be running more vehicles, because that's what their business is gonna be, selling and running vehicles. That's the only way you can sell them. Trust me. I've seen them. You've seen them. I saw mine last week. I saw y'all's, the Volvo dealership, last week, how they promised right now to run it in certain areas, but they don't. They ran it through a local neighborhood. They ran me through a local neighborhood. If I lived there, I would not want to see that. Therefore, I wouldn't wanna see it here in our hometown. So I'm gonna urge you to reject and deny this application for now. Take a good, hard study, a good, hard look, and see what the, what the real information is once you've taken that study. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's William Simpson. I reside at 2005 Al Amanda Drive. I'm not gonna take up much of your time because I'm sure you're tired. It's been a long night. I think you, by now, you've heard what everybody's feelings are. I'm gonna mention two words to you. Special exception. Now, whether you're a parent, a school teacher, a business owner, a business manager, or whatever you are, you know that when you start making special exceptions, the next thing you're gonna hear is from somebody else, and they're gonna cry, "Well, you did it for him. Why can't you do it for me?" It doesn't matter whether you have kids, whether you own a business, whether you're a school teacher, whether you're a business manager. Special exceptions result in more special exceptions, which result in problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's nobody else that wants to speak on behalf of this item, I have some requests from some of our commissioners to take a bathroom break. Counselor, if you'll permit us to take a short break before we
Absolutely.
get into our discussion, and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll give it one last chance here. Anyone that would like to speak?
May I ask, is there anyone from Johnson &amp; Wales officially representing the school? Anybody here from Johnson &amp; Wales in an official capacity? Thank you.
All right. Okay, public hearing is now closed, and we'll take a five-minute recess, bathroom breaks. Thank you so much. Welcome to your first memory time.